Given that Rich is not here, the duty of calling us to order is called into myself. All right, so first, do we have any additions to the posted agenda? This would be anything that is not currently on the agenda that we would like to, that anybody from the public board or anybody would like to discuss. Going once, going twice, so move, we're going on to approval of minutes. So this would be for the September 9th, 2024 minutes. Do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the September 9th minutes.
Aye, second.
Okay, given though I have a motion and a second, I call a question. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those above, same sign. All right, the approval of minutes passes. Public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on anything that is not currently on our posted agenda? Looking left, looking right, looking at the audience.
Oh, Jonathan.
Oh, is now an appropriate time?
Is this about something that's on the agenda or is this something?
It is about something that's on the agenda.
Then you should wait until the item comes up on the agenda.
Yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, any other public comments about something that's not on the agenda? Going once, going twice, moving on. All right, now that brings us to item four on the November 9th, excuse me, November 4th. You put November 9th.
I think it's on the top.
It's on the top.
Yeah.
For the November 4th.
It's the 4th.
It's the 4th.
See, interesting if I would actually notice that.
Yes.
For the November 4th, 2024. Item four, rezoning request for 480 Douglas Drive, 18-09, look, it's on the, it's on the Planning Commission agenda, it's there, so those two parcels. So that's going to be 480 and 474 Douglas Drive. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Parkus.
Jenna.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Jenna.
All right, thank you. Let me get this last person in before we start. So Planning Commission, I believe you saw this request a couple months ago. Since that time, it has been in front of the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to switch these around so you can see the updated report. All right, can everyone at home see the report? I just want to make sure. I'm going to hear.
Rich, if you can see it, just do a thumbs up.
Anything? I'm going to assume everyone can see this. Okay, so the updated report, after the board had received the original report of just the analysis of these two parcels, they didn't necessarily disagree with the reasoning behind rezoning this to Office Buffer District, given that there are additional protections in place for adjacent neighborhood properties. However, rezoning two parcels for Office Buffer District isn't necessarily in compliance with state law due to spot zoning. So the direction from the board was to review essentially that block from Douglas to Galen Drive to see if those parcels along Atherton would be better suited as this Office Buffer District. So that is really the updated report in front of you. That's the updated report in front of you. So we grabbed directly adjacent parcels from this block area. So you can see on the screen, we are looking at this whole portion for the church property. We are recommending that due to the fact of setbacks and additional requirements in the Office Buffer District, we are going to cut this parcel in half. Parcels can have two different zoning districts so that after further analysis with Nicole, that was the recommendation as opposed to including the whole parcel and it would just be the portion that is fronting Atherton where their parking lot is. We grabbed ownership of all these parcels. The Patent Township owns the majority of these parcels. Being considered, as you can see, right here. All right, so four of these parcels are owned by Patent Township. Summer and I, we did a drive around out in the neighborhood, just looking at the area. There is significant topography change. Let's see if I have my topo map. So there is significant topography change from the two original parcels that we looked at on Douglas over here. It's a very steep incline all the way through this first parcel and it eventually flattens out along the parcels that are owned by Patent Township. And then you get into the church property. So looking at this just for development potential and given that there are, my understanding, deed restrictions on the properties that are owned by Patent Township, that those properties need to remain as public open space in some way, shape, or form. They could not be developed. Really, the only two parcels that could be considered for development even with this rezoning are those two directly on Douglas, given the steep slopes along this first parcel. That's not what I want to do. Along 1809036, that's kind of where you get the steep slope, flattens out for Patent Township parcels, and then you have the church parcel. So we looked at the current uses, really it's just a church, the rest of those lots are pretty much vacant. The church is permitted in Office Buffer District as well, so we aren't really creating any non-conforming uses with this rezoning. And again, this is really, significant impacts would just be for these two original parcels. However, even with the, I'd say increased density of this Office Buffer District, the amount of protections that are in place with height buffering setback requirements for those adjacent neighborhood properties, the impact would be minimum. So further analysis, even with, given the topography changes we've tried to capture throughout a lot of these pictures in the report, the infrastructure improvements for these two parcels, we need to be done at that time of land development. The church parcel is right in, right out only, mostly due to site and distance restrictions, and I don't see that changing. I'm trying to think if there's any other big things. Yeah, you can see the topography change right here. We had to hang out the car window and get some pictures while we were going by. But our recommendation would be to rezone this whole area to Office Buffer District, knowing that these four parcels where the flat area of this swath is, has to remain as open, public open space. For moving forward with the actual rezoning, we would recommend doing a full education and outreach to that adjacent neighborhood, just so they understand the additional restrictions that do come with Office Buffer District in place to protect those properties. And then just the reality that the majority of the parcels in this block are owned by Patent Township and they need to remain as public open space. So I doubt anything would happen there. It can't happen there.
But if it was, if it was rezoned as OBD, then even though this one, this parcel 36, that the steep one, is not as apt to be developed, it still could be developed.
It could if you wanted to engineer that, that it's significantly steep slopes.
Right. But once we, once we rezone something, anybody?
Yeah, absolutely, it could be.
So, and then, so the only concern I had about that was, you look across the street and everything accesses onto Atherton. And I don't think anything should be accessing onto Atherton coming down the steep hill, personally.
And that's also part of the OBD regulations. Anything abouty in Atherton, we have, you won't be seeing individual driveway curb cuts that all needs to be consolidated ideally on Douglas.
Okay. So if it was rezoned, then any, if this guy whoever owns this one, I can't remember, I might have to turn the page, then that would, they would have to get like a, like a shared driveway on the two parcels that started this hole?
They would need to work with the ownership of those two parcels on Douglas to get that consolidated access.
Okay, as long as that is, yeah, as long as that's all in writing.
There's a paper street back there. I remember talking with Ken about that as well.
There's a paper street?
There was.
What do you mean, a paper street?
It was shown on a plan, but it was never developed.
Oh.
Okay.
Can you say? Paving technique?
No.
Yeah, didn't get built.
Can you say a little bit about the pedestrian and bike access?
Yes, so after Summer and I, we were out there, we actually realized there is a sidewalk. It was completely covered by leaves when we were there, heading towards Sheets. So really, after the Sheets development, the start of the church, there is no sidewalks on Atherton. There is a little bit of sidewalk on the edge of the church property, starting right around here, I'd say. So it doesn't include a complete connection to Atherton, and it does continue down into the neighborhood. Same thing on the Douglas side, there is sidewalk here at the corner. And again, with development, pedestrian improvements would need to occur at that intersection. That was in the initial report that we looked at for those two parcels.
And we also have grant funding and we're going to do some pedestrian accommodations to the traffic signal and make a little bit better of a crosswalk there in 2025. So that will, because we have folks that walk from Park Forest and cross over, so we want to, and we had someone that was hit there last year, so we're going to make some upgrades and try to make that safer.
And no one should be crossing at Galen.
No. Nobody should.
No one should.
I still see it happen.
Yeah.
Unless you want to hop the barrier.
No, I've seen that happen.
So, that's what the deer do.
So with the OBD, then they wouldn't have to put a sidewalk all the way down Atherton?
So development, you are required to put sidewalk on the properties that are going through the development process. You cannot require off-site traffic for pedestrian improvements.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from those board members on Zoom? Rich, you got any questions?
No, I don't. I was just going to ask the same thing that was asked before.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we have, we as in Patent Township has four of the plots. Can you point those four plots out, just real quick for everybody?
So the parcels owned by Patent Township include this large one where there appears to be some sort of access, as well as this, this, and this little skinny one. And this is predominantly the flat area on this block, so I don't call it.
And Patent Township cannot?
Yeah, we can't develop that.
Cannot develop that, or trade it?
No, it was dedicated to us for future open space.
Just making sure we don't get into, but it's a spot zoning anyways.
I mean technically, no. They want to make it work.
I don't like it when somebody says technically no. All right.
So if you agree with the recommendation, the next step would be this would go back to the Board of Supervisors. They would discuss it. There's a lengthy process to do with rezoning, and like Jenna mentioned, we would want to do, and this has already come up with the board, we would want to do significant outreach so that residents would be aware and could participate in the process. So it's not something that would happen, you know, next month. It would be something that would happen probably first quarter of '25, if not spring '25.
All right, so does the public have any, anybody on Zoom?
Getting thumbs up from Debbie.
All right. So our actions are, we can either recommend the approval of the rezoning, we can recommend denial of the rezoning, or we can identify additional information. So I opened up two discussions for the board members.
I got a hand from Debbie too.
I make a motion that we?
Debbie has a comment?
Debbie?
Yeah, I was just wondering, the paper street that goes the whole way up, why is that on the tax map? And would it be possible to put something through there?
So I believe the reason why it's not on the tax map is it's not taxable, so it's not on the tax map for that reason, the paper street.
Yeah, it was never, it was never developed, yep.
And it looks like we have two paper streets. We have the one here, and then we have sort of an offshoot into what I'll say is the Hall Bay for properties as a whole.
I mean, could there be a trail that goes through there?
I mean theoretically, there could be, depending on, I mean depends on.
That would be a paper street, and that would be a paper street.
Yeah, it's something that could be talked about, for sure.
Because, I'm sorry, somebody's going to have to remind me of, paper streets are not my forte. When they get canceled, who do they go to?
So typically, when a paper street is not developed, the people on either side of the property can then take the property back and add it on. They do a quick claim and they add it on to their property. So if that's adjacent to Patent, the one is adjacent to Patent Township property, Patent Township could claim that. And then we could look at doing some kind of an access point there.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm going to turn it back to you for your motion. I make a motion that we approve the analysis that was done and send it back to the board for their recognition and whatever they want to do with it.
I second that.
To clarify, so you're recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve the rezoning?
Move forward with the rezoning.
To look at it, to make it into an OBD district.
Okay, and you still second that?
Yes, I do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those above, same sign. The ayes have it. Now we are on to part five, discussion on short-term rentals and potential regulations. I noticed that there's a large group of people, well, larger than normal in the audience.
You're large.
On Zoom, they're all on Zoom.
Yeah, so Ms. Parkus?
Yeah, I'll kick this off, and then Jenna and Summer put together a really good presentation. So on September, in September, the Board of Supervisors talked about short-term rentals and how they're being regulated elsewhere in the center region. This is a discussion that actually they had back in 2012 as well, 2012, 2013. And in that time, a lot has changed with short-term rentals. So the concern that the supervisors have, and it's a concern that's shared, I think, by staff as well, is that we have folks that are buying homes and have no intention of actually living in Patent Township for even a portion of the year, and they're running out their homes, and that's creating some instability within a neighborhood. I know we've talked to folks in Park Forest who have issues with a neighbor that doesn't live there, and they can't get in touch with the person to find out, you know, if they can rectify a problem. So we wanted to look and see what kind of short-term rental regulations we might have, because we're also going to start working on attainable housing regulations in the new year. And short-term rentals and attainable housing, I think, sort of go hand in hand in that when folks are out and they're buying up homes, cash, and then they're not living, and then they're running them out full-time, not, and not a long-term rental, they're running them out short-term, long, throughout the year, that's causing issues with folks that want to get into a home, right? So the people like, that want to get into a home in Park Forest are having trouble because they're competing against that market. I will also say that there is now a short-term rental housing task force that was put together by the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. We had our first meeting, I believe it was a week ago, and we're meeting again this week to talk. State College, Ferguson Township, College Township, Bellefonte Borough have short-term housing rental regulations. The discussion that we had at that first meeting was, if we do anything, they should all be somewhat similar, because it's confusing, Mark McMastor, pointing at him because he's a Realtor, but he said at that meeting very succinctly, I have a flow chart of what everybody's regulations are, so if someone calls me and says, oh, can I rent this out, I can pull out my flow chart because everything's different, right? And we all do things across borders, so it doesn't necessarily make sense. So we wanted to start the conversation with you guys tonight. We think we can come up with, I think there are some good regulations we can pull from in the county and see where we want to go. Jenna and Summer did an excellent job putting together information. Again, I don't think the intent, at least the sense that I get, the intent is not to stop someone who owns a home and lives in the home the majority of the year from occasionally running out of house, right? I understand that. It's the, I'm going to come in with my college friends, buy up a house, I have no intent of living here, and then I'm going to show up two weekends a year and I'm just going to run it out the other five weekends, football weekends of the year. So I, you know, I understand this is a way that some folks stay in their homes, this is how they pay their mortgage, and this is how they pay other bills that they have, and I appreciate that. So I'm not, I don't think we're looking to do anything that stops that. It's more, we have to do something that helps out these neighborhoods, Park Forest in particular. I know that some of the other neighborhoods, the HOAs prohibit short-term rentals as well. So there are already some kind of regulations out there, they're just not going through the township.
So what you are looking to prevent is single-home hotels?
Yes, that's exactly what it's become. And it's not just a problem in State College, right? It's everywhere. It's all across the state, it's all across the country. But like, the horse is completely out of the barn on this one, so we've got to find a way to sort of bring it back in some fashion. So with that, I'll let Jenna do her presentation.
All right. Summer and I will be splitting this one.
All right, let's talk about short-term rentals. And so what is a short-term rental? A short-term rental can be a single room, an apartment, a house, your really cool garage that you converted into this awesome sports-watching apartment. So they are rented out to guests for a short period of time, typically a night or weekend to up to several weeks, but usually less than 30 consecutive days. Has, has anyone here ever used Airbnb or Verbo? Cool. So here's a little snapshot of Verbo. I just typed in State College, put a random week in December for two travelers. I tried to zoom in to Patent Township. You can kind of see there, there's a lot in Park Forest, and then it kind of goes out into Toff trees a little bit, and then further out towards Half Moon, and then a lot towards downtown State College. So there's definitely a lot around. So what are some challenges with short-term rentals? The initial concerns are always safety and neighborhood nuisances, but there's also fewer housing options for people that want to move here. Gentrification of neighborhoods and enforcement is another, another big one for municipalities. What are the benefits of short-term rentals? Well, obviously, increased earnings, not only for the property owner, like Amy had said earlier, there, you know, that's a great way to help pay your mortgage or any other bills that you might have, but there's also increased earnings for businesses in our So how do we balance the benefits and challenges of short-term rentals? A big one's going to be engaging the community, doing outreach and education. We also have to conduct research for, to better understand the local short-term rental environment. We have to develop policies that balance the needs of short-term rental operators and the community members around them. We also will have to work with stakeholders to promote responsible short-term rental practices.
All right, so on to me. What have we seen in common short-term rental regulations? I have seen from, I helped write the Borough of State Colleges ordinance, all the way to Ferguson Township, which I'd say is on the other side of that spectrum, balancing out those individual municipalities' needs. So the borough has a significant ordinance, they regulate the amount of weekends you can rent out your home. They require the property owner to provide a log of every time they've rented out their home to places, to, which the way that I see Patent Township going is similar to Ferguson Township, requiring residency for a portion of the year. Requiring residency for a portion of the year. For Ferguson, we decide on six months, I've seen nine months, whatever that is for Patent Township. But having that residency requirement, and I will say, either the owner needs to be in there for a longer period of time and/or they have a long-term tenant in there. So we did have that at Pat and Ferguson with an enforcement issue. They had a long-term tenant in the home and it was one of the, it's one of the leases where eight weekends out of the year, you need to vacate because we also do short-term rental on those weekends. And they were meeting the ordinance. They had a long-term tenant and that, they provided their lease to us and that was meeting the ordinance. So the most successful I have seen is residency requirements. It cuts down on your investors coming in and essentially having hotels in neighborhoods. Whatever that is for Patent Township, that's something that we all need to figure out together. We get a lot of complaints about parking on the street, so that is a requirement. You need one parking spot off the street for every room in the home, if you're renting a home. Which usually driveway suffice for that requirement. And then just the noise, but again, Patent Township has a noise ordinance that police enforce after-hours events that may occur then. So really nothing changes in that aspect. So really the lot of what we see is parking, the noise. But having those extra requirements to get a permit, et cetera, it also gives us something to take away if it's abused. Like, right now, Patent, we don't regulate this use. So if there are issues, there's no necessarily a way to stop it either. So at least if, with a permit, you can take it if they are frequent flyers, as I call them, and issues with properties. So the one thing I will note for Patent Township, and this is a code issue, so my biggest thing with this, I don't mind this use at all, I just bought a house, I might be considering it too. Safety, that's the biggest thing. So the one thing that Patent Township makes you a little bit different than all the other municipalities in Center Region, that you permit occupants to stay in their home up to seven consecutive days without that house having a rental permit on it. So a rental permit from code is that an inspector is going in, making sure there are smoke detectors, that like, basic code violations are being addressed because you will have people staying in your home. That is one of the ways that essentially our code officials have not been any short-term rentals in Patent Township for those regulations, because they're only here on weekends, it's not seven consecutive days, they don't need to. I think the Borough of Bellefonte actually changed that in the property maintenance code. They went down to a day. The Borough of State College followed suit and then it kind of spread from there. So that would be the first thing that I'd recommend if it truly is safety. And that may be the only thing that you require. Get a rental permit from code. We don't want a short-term rental permit, but at least we know it's been checked, it's safe for inhabitants.
What about taxes? Collecting taxes on the rentals?
So the county treasurer was actually at our short-term housing task force, which was great, because she told us that Airbnb will actually remit the taxes directly to her office. They won't necessarily tell you the location, but they'll remit the taxes. And then she does have residents that are doing short-term rentals that will call on their own and say, how do I pay the hotel tax to you? And then she usually refers them back out and says, you need to call if you're in College Township, you need to call College Township because they have regulations. So there are taxes being paid, the hotel tax, on, I can't say how many of these properties, but on a percentage of the properties that are being used as short-term rentals. VRBO, I don't believe collects the taxes and remits the taxes to the county, so, but Airbnb is definitely doing that.
Ms. Parkus, can you tell us where hotels are allowed in Patent Township zoning-wise?
Where?
Mm-hmm.
I would assume any commercial and/or, is that permitted in mixed use?
It is permitted, I believe in mixed use, whereas in cold.
So in residential one, residential two, residential three, we do not allow hotels?
Goodness, no. No.
Okay.
No, no.
So if we do not allow hotels, but we have hotel being taxed, hotel taxes being collected, then that'd be an indication of a, of a hotel, would it not?
I mean theoretically, yes.
Depends on the, how the zoning officer would interpret the primary use of that structure being.
Well, I think if we had a, a primary resident there, we're not having a conversation about being a hotel, it's just a short-term rental for a room, for a game, for 14 days out of the year. But if it is a commercial business that has bought a house, do we allow rent-in breakfasts in Resilone?
Typically, I've never seen it, so I doubt it.
Okay. I'm just asking the questions. And yes, I do a lot of tax work actually on excise and hotel taxes.
In some, my cousin, my cousin lives in Pacific Beach, California, and they have like a transient tax or something like that. I mean, it's not a hotel tax per se. But it's like, if you lease out, you know, your property or a room in your house or whatever, it's called some type of transient tax.
A lot of taxes that you see in California are structured, are structured completely differently than you have here in Pennsylvania.
Right, well.
But we do have the hotel excise tax, which is 6% for anything under, under 30 days. It's not one month, it's anything under 30 days. So if it's under 30 days, it, and they, they consider Verbos and Airbnbs as hotel tax. Was there somebody raising their hand?
No, no, there was somebody that needed to let in.
Oh.
I'm watching online, so if there are any comments.
I have one question, no matter what we do, we want to go ahead with this grandfathering. What about the ones that are already out there? Are they going to claim grandfather and they don't have to do anything?
So that comes down to your solicitor. I have seen the, as the borough defines them as student homes. They were vested in those rights. They've been doing that since the seventies. However, when Ferguson adopted their short-term rental regulations, and you have the same solicitor as Ferguson, everyone had to get a permit regardless. So I believe Ferguson, it was a one-time fee initially, and then it was a free renewal annually every year after that. If you stopped though, for a year, whatever, something happened, then you'd have to pay the fee again. And that was just providing proof that you've got your rental permit from code. Ferguson decided to have their own zoning permit for short-term rental as well. And that was actually a brilliant thing that the zoning officer and the ordinance enforcement officer and I worked on. We required in the ordinance that the permit number for the short-term rental had to be posted in the window of the property and on all of your ads. That advertising for rent. It was just easier for us to enforce. Then our ordinance enforcement officer didn't have to enter the property. They could just sit there from the street and look, they're like, yep, it's in the window, they have a permit, great, we have no issues. Or if we were doing proactive enforcement, just looking on Verbo, Airbnb, if they didn't include their rental permit number in their ad, that was a violation of the ordinance. And we could go about that. And first time, we're always like, we have a permit for this, we need to get one, you know?
Is that just for the taxes or is that also for?
Safety. It's a safety issue, yeah.
Safety.
Okay.
For us, it was safety.
Because carbon monoxide just takes a couple hours to take out a whole house full of people, so.
Yeah, and I mean, if you think about it, if you're going to stay in a hotel, that hotel has gone through safety inspections, has a permit, it's been checked. If you're staying in a long-term rental, that rental has a permit through the code office, it has the proper ingress and egress, it has the proper fire and smoke alarms and carbon monoxide. If you're staying in a short-term rental, you don't know what you're getting, right? And so some of the discussion that we had at this first short-term rental task force was just about that, that, you know, and they also brought up, someone brought up sex trafficking because hotels are now, you know, they're trained to look for possible sex trafficking. And they said, you know, there could be the concern that now they're moving into the short-term rental market because they're not regulated largely, by and large. And there's nobody there to, you know, check in on these things. So I think the safety is probably the bigger concern. The hotel tax is a county issue, that money doesn't come to Patent Township or any of the townships. So I think it's really more the safety issue that we're concerned about within the neighborhoods.
What I'm concerned on the neighborhood side is, we don't allow hotels in residential areas. And this has ended up becoming a throughput of putting hotels in residential areas. I know at least the people that are in Clearfield or Clearview Avenue have let me know multiple times that there's multiple hotels operating in there.
We have Rich as well.
Who has a hand up?
Rich.
Rich?
So out of that list, do you want us to give you like the things that we want to see, the things that we must have out of the list? Because for me, I don't need to tell you the house that is diagonal to my property. But the individual lives out of the country that owns the property. And I think out of the things that are on the slideshow that are on the screen, I think the requirement in some capacity, as you said Jenna, either the tenant or the person that owns the home, I think that's something that for our township, I think, needs to be seen. And I think the other thing, as you mentioned, Amy, is my primary concern is the, is how safe the property is because the house that's near me, there hasn't been anyone in there for months. And things change, things age, and I have no clue what the safety is there either. So I think out of that list on the slides, I think they have some requirement, as you all said, of having either a tenant or the owner be in the property for a certain amount of time needs to happen.
Any other comments from Zoom?
Oh, we have one. Jonathan?
Yes, I really appreciate this discussion. This obviously impacts us all. My name is Jonathan. I live in the Borough of State College and I've actually worked a lot on this issue. I'm one of the Airbnb community host organizers. So if I may, I just want to kind of transmit some observations of kind of the stuff we've dealt with in the borough. Because I, as, I mean, I, you know, I live in my house, I Airbnb, it's a big fundamental part of housing affordability. I feel a lot of issues have become conflated on this topic and I find a lot of people make comments on this issue that I don't think really understand how we actually operate. So I'd just like to clarify a few things that have come up that I've seen in the borough. The, recently when the, the, the requirement for the inspections was passed, I mean, this was, this had been discussed before and obviously the safety is an important thing. I had a person that already had that. It didn't really impact me because I already knew I was going to rent a portion of my house, it was no big deal. This, however, I'm pretty sure that the reason this was passed in the borough was to depress the market, not really because it was needed for the people that had been renting out their house for seven football weekends for 30 years and really lived in their house all the time anyway. However, for those people, it can become a real hassle and some houses that may not conform because of, because idiosyncrasies, when it really doesn't have anything specifically to do with fire safety, that really makes them not able to afford their mortgage as well, as it were. One of the things we talked about at the state level was whether or not there should be a tiered system for people who rent, you know, maybe seven, you know, 14 nights a year, 30 nights a year versus people like me who do it quite a bit. For us, that level of accountability is not really a huge deal.
Hey Jonathan?
Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
You said fire safety.
Yes.
So can you go into that a little bit, please?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, I guess the, the logic that I have is that if people are living in their home pretty much all the time anyway, and they are, and they, they use smoke detectors for their children, I think maybe requiring them to, I mean, you know, I suppose it doesn't really hurt to do that type of thing. I mean, it, but I mean, if, if, if it's a historical house and it really is, people are safe enough living in it most of the year anyway, it maybe, maybe could be a real burden for them to have to go through the process of getting an inspection when they, if they feel safe enough living in it all the time, then maybe it's a lot.
So I still don't see how getting an inspection from codes to look at the fire detection equipment and make sure that there's a fire extinguisher is, is a hassle for that. I mean, it just sounds like it's one or two hours out of your day to let the inspector in.
I mean, as, as long as that's all it is. I mean, I guess the concern that I have is that if there are, if there are non-conforming properties that may not, may not pass a normal inspection because I, I guess I worry that idiosyncratic things that aren't really safety issues could be a barrier for people. As long as that's not the case, I don't really have an objection.
Okay. Anything else?
And on, and I mean, and I guess the last point I'll make and then I'll let you guys go, on the same note, there really is no path in the borough to the modern bed and breakfast, which is what we have. The bed and breakfast regulation that we have really only allows an extremely narrow range of properties to be used, which effectively bans it. And this is how a lot of people afford to pay for their kid's college, this is how they afford their mortgage, this is how they, they pay for their retirement. People that live in their homes and run a business that people in the neighborhood use. And I think without considering how this affects housing affordability and making it convenient for the people that are doing it responsibly, that are on-site, without a thorough investigation of how that actually is done, I think a lot of times it kind of misses how people actually do it and prohibits people from practicing a legitimate business that brings them into the area.
Jonathan, may I ask you a question again? So we don't allow hotels, as what's been said by Ms. Parkus, in the residential districts that some people in this area that we know have bought and turned into just hotels.
Right.
Do you think that's okay?
I, I have my.
To allow a single-house hotel when there's supposed to be no hotels in residential areas?
I'm not going to comment on that issue because it's not personally a major concern for me. I personally consider tourist.
And then my next question to you, Jonathan, is, being somebody from outside Patent Township, would you want to move into a house in a neighborhood, you buy that house, you're going to raise your kids there, and then you find out that it's being used as a hotel?
That I was there? I mean, this is a thing that, that people on my street do. I mean, if it's, for, for the neighbors of mine that are present and are, that have taken houses that were destroyed by people who owned them and turned them into something where the grass is the nicest on the block, I personally don't object to that. That's what the people next door to me do. But the concern about tourist homes, I think, is a legitimate one. I think the issue is nuanced, but I don't care to argue it at the moment. I think you've made a good point, tourist homes aren't legal. My main concern is people who use it to afford their homes and their futures.
And I think that's something that's been suggested by Jenna by actually having a residency requirement, which would still allow people short-term residency. I thank you for your comments. Do we have any other comments on Zoom? Do we have any comments from anybody here that would like to make comments?
I'm happy to.
Sit down. Yes, state your name, speak into the microphone so that everybody gets your name and everything.
Sure. Mark McMaster. I actually live in Benner Township. I was.
What do you do, Mark?
What do I do? I am a real estate agent and I also have a short-term rental in my house, so I'm one of the owner-occupied folks. I'm on the Center County Association of Realtors Government Affairs Committee. We do have a policy statement on short-term rental regulation. We're happy to share with you guys.
Which is? Which is?
It's about two pages long, so you probably don't want me to read it to you. It's basically about protecting private property rights. We are not opposed to regulation, just like Ms. Parkus said. If we, you know, if there is regulation, we'd like it to be consistent across the region, if, if possible. Because like we've all talked about, all of these different municipalities have different ones. You know, you go to College Township and it's basically nonexistent. And you go to the borough and there's things you can do, and it's, in the borough, it's a business license, and in this township, it's a zoning regulation. So there's lots of different things out there. I am a, you know, as a real estate agent, I'm a big proponent of private property rights, so I don't like regulating away people's private property rights. I think the amount of people that.
I'm going to get you on this. But the question is, is it, isn't it a property right to move into an area that is zoned? But the question is, isn't it a property right to move into an area that is zoned residential and have it be residential?
Sure. And in my defense, you continue to use the word hotel. And I think if you look up the zoning definition in Patton Township of a hotel, it's not what's actually happening. I think a hotel is, and there may not be a definition. And if there isn't, there should be, because you mentioned, I just looked it up, a lot in your zoning regulation. So to not have a definition of something that's mentioned that often is problematic.
You're there on the same page.
I had this discussion a lot in municipality managers' meetings with Doug Erickson, that the logic of at 30 days, it's not a hotel, but at 29 days, it is a hotel, or seven days, it is a hotel, because of all these different regulations. Because I can put someone in there on 30-day rentals, and you don't consider it a hotel, but at 29 days, you're telling me it's a hotel?
And that, I can actually explain why that is. That's the hotel excise tax from the state.
Well, we're, all the people that are doing short-term rentals anyway are paying the hotel tax in your definition that you'd used earlier. So there, and if you stay in a hotel for over 30 days, are they paying the hotel excise tax?
Not after the 30th date.
Okay. So regardless, there should be a definition of a hotel. The thing that struck out to me most, like Ms. Farkas said, I'm also on that short-term rental task force with the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau, that the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau is 80, what'd they tell us? 85 or 80% funded by hotels. And one of the first things out of their mouth was the short-term rentals are cutting into the hotel's profits. So when I look at what a lot of the short-term rental owners in this area are local citizens who live in this area, and we're saying, we would not like them to make money. We would like hotel chains to make money. People from outside the area that come in and do that, they're cutting into our profits. And I'm, you know, you said that there's issues in the township with short-term rentals. I would assume they're probably the same ones that everyone has. They're noise, trash, and parking. You have ordinances for all of them, correct? Noise, trash, and parking.
You're missing another one.
What's that?
Lack of affordable housing.
Okay. I'm happy to address that one too. Because that is my hot button, and Ms. Farkas can attest to that. I have been at probably every single affordable housing meeting in this county, for that matter, going back a very, very long time. I was part of one of the very first affordable housing projects that we did together in Harris Township. Didn't turn out as well. So, you know, I looked at it today, how many places there are in Center County that are currently for rent on Airbnb on just a random week. There was not a football weekend, because if you pick a week that includes a football weekend, there are two. If you just pick a random week in December, there's 278. So there's, and that's in the entire county. So there's 63,562 housing units, according to COG. So that's one-half of 1%. So I don't think it affects affordability as much as allowing people to continue to rent their homes for an affordability purpose. I was at the Belphant Borough work session when they were also regulating short-term rentals, which they, they regulated it when they had 21. And there, most of the people that were in that room were very concerned, they're all continued non-conforming youths now, grandfathered, is that this was how they afforded to pay for their house. One guy, younger guy, bought a foreclosure. He said, why are they doing this to me? Like, this is how I afford to keep my house. I fix up my house by making it better, using this money that I get from renting my house out. So I don't think housing affordability plays a big role in that. You could go to Belphant Borough and see if it changed their affordability. I could give you the statistics on that. It hasn't. They outlawed it a year ago. They didn't allow a single new one unless it's in the commercial business district right downtown. No R1, no R2, nothing in a residential zone. It hasn't changed any of their affordability whatsoever. So in fact, it's, it's continued to go up. Everywhere has. Because we're not building enough housing in general. So, you know, the other argument is the sex trafficking that they talked about. The only places that I've heard of sex trafficking and prostitution in the center region have happened in hotels. So, you know, Fairfield Inn, Super 8 on South Atherton Street. I think that's more of a problem. I've never heard of it in a short-term rental in this area. And I guess kind of to get into Jonathan's point, and I've had this discussion with some other folks, short-term rentals, especially the ones that are used specifically for short-term rentals, are usually, not all the time, probably the best-looking house on their street. So it is bringing up property values, and I know you guys brought up gentrification in there. But I think regular development has probably done more to hurt gentrification or to gentrify this community and take away affordable housing than short-term rentals ever will. I mean, no offense, guys, but Patton Township took out the Penn State Mobile Home Park and put it in Aldi. So you took away, you took away a lot of affordable housing.
It's for my time.
Yeah. It's for a lot of our time. But, you know, that, that did more to hurt affordable housing in this area than what a short-term rental ever would, in my opinion. And I think you're-
So what's your suggestion? Let's cut to the cheese.
Yeah, sure. Like I said, private property rights. I think anyone should be able to buy a property and do what they want with it, as long as they're meeting all of the other regulations, you know? Homeowners' associations, when people buy a house that's in a homeowners' association, they're agreeing to abide by all those regulations. Most of those HOAs, like I heard you guys talking about, you can't rent there. You can't rent short-term there. I own two personally in Haverford Heights. They're long-term rentals. And I have families in both of them because short-term rental's not allowed there. If it was, I would probably have a short-term rental. I have a short-term rental at my house in Benner Township because it's allowed. But the vast majority of our guests are families. And they're families that don't want to stay in hotels because they have multiple people there, would cost them a lot more money.
I'm going to stop you there, and I'm just going to ask, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? Okay. The reason why is, is we're supposed to, like, five minutes, like, stop keeping track?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm happy to.
But just give me a 30-second synopsis and we'll go on to somebody else.
Yeah. And like I said, I think that stopping people from investing in short-term rentals and making those properties better, as long as they're meeting trash, you know, trash, noise, parking concerns, that I don't think there's as much harm there as what the hotels will tell you. Because they don't, like they said, they told us they don't like short-term rentals cutting into their profits. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you. And I swear I'll do a better job of making sure it's only five minutes.
It's totally fine.
I'll try to keep it brief. My name's Liam Goebel. I live in Ferguson Township. I do own short-term rentals. I also happen to live next to an Airbnb.
Is it yours?
It is one of mine. But let me-
How does it sound like?
It was, no, it's fine. It was affordable housing prior to it. My daughter was born, and in the five years that it had been affordable housing prior to my daughter being born, twice, the state police were down the street, guns out, pulled people out of that house. And I didn't want my daughter growing up next to that. So we were in a position to be able to purchase that, improve it. I had neighbors stopping by thanking me for improving the house, making it a better space, cleaning it up. So we did do that. I do own two here in Patton Township. Affordability is a big concern, and it's what everybody points to. You guys, I'm sure, have seen the New York City regulations they put out and are familiar with them. They eliminated about 80% of the Airbnbs in New York City, and it has done nothing for the housing affordability in the city. I know a couple of years back, and I was really interested in this in Patton Township, this was probably four or five years ago, I think you guys tried to introduce some legislation which would allow certain R1 homes to have some ADUs for housing affordability. And it was shot down, I think, pretty firmly.
It was not, it was not very well watched.
It's not well received.
And so it goes back to-
Brought forward incorrectly, in my opinion. It was brought forward incorrectly. We were still seeking information, and it was put forward as we wanted to change an ordinance and bring this in.
It, from the outside, it looks like there's this call for housing affordability. It's offered, and then, you know, it's pretty resoundly getting shot down. And it, those two, you kind of look at those two, and it's like, all right, we're going to blame the Airbnbs where we have 250 in the county, but we don't actually want to take action here in the township.
Trust me, we've wanted to take-
Well, and we are, I think it's, we should clarify, we are going to take action on attainable housing regulations. And that's sort of the next piece of this. We were talking about short-term rentals because I used to own a house in Bollesburg, and I bought that house in 2007. I bought that house for $136,000. It was 847 square feet. When I bought the house in 2007, there wasn't a short-term rental market like there is today. My husband and I just bought a house in Half Moon Township back in the spring. We were looking for a house for a year in Patton Township, because at the time I had a residency requirement. We were shot down on almost every single house because we lost out to somebody who came in with cash. And a lot of those were properties that got converted into a short-term rental by investors who don't live in the area. And that's the issue that we're having. Getting into the market is difficult as is. The housing market went nuts over the last couple of years, as we all know. But then adding this layer of, and again, in my mind, I don't care if Mark has a short-term rental that he lives in and he rents out a couple of weekends a year. That doesn't bother me. I have a resident who lives in Park Forest who's having a major stormwater issue. And the person that owns the house that's causing the stormwater issue lives in Philadelphia, doesn't come up here but for two weekends a year. He has no way of contacting that person. So is there a way that we can craft a regulation that still allows for some of that, but you have to have a local contact or something that still sort of helps move the dime? Because I do think that we don't have a lot of houses, and I was hearing this from the Realtors for a bunch of years now, we don't have a lot on our market, right? There's just not a lot of inventory. And then when things come up, I mean, Jenna just went through the housing market as well, and I think had the same struggles that I had. And, you know, we're not even in the attainable market. We were in the regular market, and it's still very difficult to do anything. So trying to do something, I think it's a multi-pronged problem, and trying to address all the prongs of the problem is what we're looking at.
And I will address it, that there have been people that I know, and their neighbors in the Clearview Avenue area, that recently had a house go up. It would have been a perfect starter home for any Penn State professor, and it went to a full-time Airbnb.
Sure.
So there's a lot of people that are in that area that are upset. They want families living there. They don't want game parties. I was like, I am normally the person that's all about, you can use your property for what you want. I would like to put an ADU on my property and have an ADU. In fact, I was the one saying, let me have two ADUs on my property, and they were telling me no. So the problem is, is we have Patton Township residents that are fed up with the short-term rentals that are here and what they've been doing. So now we have to craft something to make it fair for everybody. But, you know, you just told me you have two in Patton Township. Do you live there?
I don't. Nope. No. I live in Ferguson, like I said.
And do you have long-term people staying there? Are people staying there 365 days a year?
No. And I, we talked 30 days, right? Anything over 30 is what we talked. And I do have people come in for that. There's students that have, there's some odd programs here at Penn State that don't match the normal rental season here. So I have students that are coming to me because they don't have space to go downtown because there's student rentals, they can't do the borough. So they're looking for opportunities like that. I've had parents come in to adopt kids, and they need to get some residency here. And so they're here during that adoption process, whatever that is. And so they've been here for a period of time for that. I don't know what it is. It was a, I'm not sure, but they were, that's what they told us. They were here for a period of time. Grandparents coming in to visit when babies are born, that kind of a thing. I also, me personally, I have a contracting business, and so I'm purchasing homes that are virtually unlivable. They've been on the market, Mark's my Realtor, they're typically on the market 90 days. You probably looked at some of the homes that I've looked at and purchased. And, you know, the second story, when you have to remove the entire second-story subfloor because it smells of cat urine throughout the entire house, that's not a homeowner, like, you're not going to buy that and move into that, that house. I do think you guys need some sort of at least permitting process through the code office. It's kind of nuts to me that you guys don't have it. And I know that there are some of my clients who are like, I'm going to buy there because I don't have to go through that process. So I think that's something that needs to be talked about, thought about. And again, you have the, you know, the parking, the trash, the noise, as regulations are already on the books.
Thank you for your honesty.
Thank you.
We have someone on Zoom. Kyler.
Hi. Yeah, thanks, everyone. Just wanted to give my two cents and kind of echo what Mark had said earlier. But my business partner and I operate some short-term rentals.
Kyler, Kyler, can you state your name and where you live, please?
Yeah. My name's Kyler. We have two properties in the Patton Township area, right? So born and raised in Center County, along with my business partner. So just wanted to make it clear that we're not distant investors, but rather individuals with kind of like some deep ties in the community, because it's our family, friends, and our neighbors. So in addition to that, you know, we did want to say that since we began hosting, we've made some efforts to support the community in ways that we know that the hotels haven't. And which I've heard today, that, you know, the hotels are kind of like funding this task force. And that's semi-concerning for a small business owner, right? Being stifled out by corporate America. But, you know, we've been assisting with the relocation of professionals moving to State College area, have hosted families who needed accommodations during funerals. You know, we've participated in housing-related events to support those in need, such as Habitat for Humanity, purchasing welcome basket items for local businesses, using small and local service providers for property upkeep. So I think that there's a lot of really good positives here. Some of the things I heard that was a negative was around safety. And I'm in agreement. I think that, like, asking the homeowner to keep an application and some sort of inspection up to date, that seems to be fair. But I just want to make sure that we're not snowballing this into something bigger than it really needs to be. So I digress. I just wanted to give my two cents here.
Kyler, for the record, where do you, I was trying to get where you live.
Great. Center Hall. I have a couple houses.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. With that, I close comments from the public and open discussions to the board members.
I think a lot of the points are brought up. We need the permitting process of some sort.
Yeah, we definitely need to have that in place for safety. And I also think, what, so the regulations, are there regulations at all in Patton Township as far as, so somebody can just buy a house and it can be just short-term? Which in short-term is under 30 days?
Yep.
Under 30 days?
And if they keep it under seven, they don't need a rental permit from code?
Okay.
Oh, I really like the idea of normalizing this across the, all the jurisdictions of possible.
At least within the CRPC, yeah.
And is the seven days, is that state or what?
That was a number that was chosen by Patton Township. Every year when the property maintenance code is updated, that is essentially the opportunity to make those changes. However, talking with Walt, there have been just mid-year requests from municipalities. But I had asked him issues that he has seen going around. And he said, by far, it's just a seven-day consecutive thing. Because he's like, if it's a weekend rental, it's two days, three days. And he's like, it doesn't meet that seven-day threshold. He's like, everyone else has one, or I think Harris was three?
Harris is, yeah.
Yeah. And I remember when Walt had come to all the municipalities with this a long time ago, saying, we need to set a time. And I know there, I was in Harris Township at the time, and there was some pushback from my elected officials then, who didn't want to see any, they wanted to let people do whatever they were going to do and, you know, let them run out as long as they can. And again, I think taking that seven-day down to one would help because that addresses the safety concerns. And I think also a permitting process through, even if it's through the township, you just have to get a zoning permit. I think that also helps because I think the vast majority of people do actually want to do the right thing.
Yeah. Well, and if you have to get a zoning permit and have a safety inspection to do that, because so many, with this market being as fast as it's been for the last five, six years, so many houses are being sold without home inspections. I mean, you're not, you lose out if you even suggest you want a home inspection. So just to make sure that things like egress and, and, and smoke alarms and furnaces and things like that are in optimal condition, things that people aren't going to see. Because most people who are going to do a lot of Airbnbs or use their properties for Airbnbs, they're going to keep them nice. Because, I mean, who's going to, everybody's going to look at the picture online. picture online, and everybody's going to want something that's four or five star, you know, for the money they're shelling out. But, but you have, it has to be the things that you can't see, that have to be there. And, and I think too, a lot of people aren't like having loud parties, even if it is a football weekend. I mean, you're going to find more families or multi-generations, like groups of people who want to be together, who don't want to have like, six different hotel rooms.
Right.
Or have their kids, you know, across the hall from them, kind of thing go in. So I think for safety, I think, I think it would be good to, if people are going to be, just to make sure that they have an annual kind of thing, but I do think we need to do something across the board that is homogeneous with, with, at least with our other townships right in here.
Sure.
Maybe not the entire county, but with, with, how many, we have about seven townships that are all?
Six.
Six, yeah, yeah.
So I ask the board, would, do we all feel comfortable with at least sending, hey, we would like to see it shifted from a seven-day to a one-day? At least, Rich, Debbie, what, your thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, no, I, I mean, I think the major thing is to have some oversight, as you just said, of the permitting process, to ensure, what Sharon said, to make sure that the things that you can't see on the photos are safe and working condition. So, yes, I would like to see that more tightened up.
Debbie, you're next.
I agree with both of those guys. I think that you have to have some kind of permit to be able to rent and have a safety issue, and I know, I have an Airbnb behind me, and they rent every weekend, and I have to say, they're, they're great people that live in there, and they follow the rules. Occasionally, they'll get a little loud, but it's not bad. So, I don't want to punish people like that, that does stay there through the week, and occasionally on weekends rent it out. So, I think that's a good thing. The other thing I'm thinking about is, I had a client that lives in California, her son lives here in State College, he's not old enough to have the rental yet, he has to be in the dorms, but they wanted to buy it as investment. They don't want to pay $1,700 a weekend to go to a hotel where they could gather into a family. So, how do we treat somebody that's a homeowner like that, and then comes back, you know, occasional weekends, but yet has a son that may be, you know, living in there in a week? So I think we kind of have to fine-tune that as well, because I think that's part of it. So, I'm in agreeance with everybody that thinks about the safety issue. I think parking is another issue, especially when you get on places over on Oakwood, where you don't have a lot of additional parking, so I do see that.
So, I would say that it sounds like to me, since this doesn't appear to be, this is only a discussion, any action, it sounds like we at least have a consensus on wanting to switch it from a seven-day to a one-day.
Yeah, so what we'll do is, we'll put together some draft regulations for you to look at, because we want you, at the end of the day, to be able to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So, we can put together some draft regulations, I think we've had some good notes about the conversations that we had tonight. I think what Debbie just brought up, with the son living in the house, and then the parents coming in periodically, there's things we need to think about with that as well, but, and then we can, you know, discuss this again in a future meeting and see where we're at.
Because that probably happens a lot in this town, a lot more than we think.
Yeah, I think it does. I think there's a lot of parents that buy homes for their child, yep.
Adam, go ahead.
Bought a lot of them in Park Forest, a lot of houses are bought, and they're sold after about four years because the kid.
Has graduated.
The parents who had that house, they graduate, so then they sell it to some other parent, and four college kids move in.
I used to, I used to work with a contractor, and there were several townhomes I saw in the area of Patent Township that were turned into just game-day homes for, you know, just for eight days a year. They own it, but they only show up for eight days out of the year, and yes, that is also on the list of things to figure out.
Galen Drive.
Is there, is this something?
Drive along Galen Drive on a football weekend, cars all over the place. Drive up on Wednesday, one or two here.
So, since we're still in discussion, what do people think? What's the board's temperature on asking staff for owner occupied?
I feel there has to be, not necessarily owner occupied, but it has to be occupied.
Okay.
I'm kind of, I don't know how I feel about that exactly.
Would you like to know more?
Yeah, I probably would.
I couldn't hear what you said.
Okay, and then Debbie and Rich, your feelings on owner occupied? I mean, it's only a discussion right now.
So, when you're saying owner occupied, the owner lives in California, he comes back seven, eight games, keeps it for the son for the following week, the following year. It was out, and then they rent it out maybe two, two weeks.
But it would be, but you're talking about it being occupied.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you said.
You're talking about it being occupied, correct?
Well, part-time, I mean, when they come back into town, so they're probably there two times this month, three times the next month, you know, back and forth. But I think if we're going to, if, even in talking about something like that, maybe we have, they have, you know, somebody like Liam that was just in, that they hire him to manage the property.
I mean, I think we should look and see what kind of regulations we can find, because again, this is not just a center-region, State College issue. We talked about the Poconos, Lancaster County, anywhere there's a little bit of tourism, right? So maybe we can do a little bit of research on that topic.
And is this something we can bring up at Center Regional Planning Commission? I mean, how do we get something on their agenda?
You tell me, and then I tell Jenna, and then I tell Mike.
Okay, could you get it on?
Right, can I?
Jenna?
Ask a question, I don't know how to use.
I mean, just, just to get like, information flowing before, you know, as we're doing research, before it kind of gets to a place where we're starting to make choices and decisions.
Yeah, that's really all regulations and presentations that we give. I mean, we have looked at all of the regulations for all the center-region municipalities that have regulations, to the, as extreme as the borough, I'd say Borough, College, Ferguson, and those are.
Can I ask a question real quick? Sorry, I'm online, I'm really bad on Zoom, I should be better at it. But I didn't know how to raise my hand.
Ben, would you state your name and where you live, for the record, please?
Yeah, Ben Danz, I live in College Township. Born and raised, I was actually born in the State College Hospital, which was a long time ago, anyway.
Long as me.
What's that?
Said not as long as me.
Right? But my question is really around the owner occupied, and I keep hearing safety come up a lot. Have there been like laws that have actually been broken around like, like what, is the safety concern applicable to our township, like to our, to our area in general? Because I'm wondering if like, if we're not actually seeing a problem, and we're reading stories about places like New York City, or California, or like Oregon, or other places like that, then how does that apply to State College? And I'm wondering if we're going to over-regulate something that doesn't need to be over-regulated.
So, I can tell you from when I was in Harris Township, we actually got a complaint, because we had somebody who rented out a short-term rental, this is, Paris doesn't have any regulations on this, they rented out a short-term rental, and they called us because they were mad that their tailgate food got eaten or whatever, but we found out later that the person rented them a garage, that was literally a garage, and didn't have any kind of ingress or egress, and was like, here, you can shove six people in here, and we'll charge you this amount of money. So, there are issues, I think, around that, and so, you maybe don't hear about it as much, but it is happening in State College, and we do have a very good code agency, and we do have very good property maintenance regulations, which having to get a permit would take away a lot of those concerns about the ingress, the egress, the fire alarms, that kind of thing.
So, yeah, the, the, the safety aspect, at least with Patent Township, would probably be dealt with by moving from a seven-day no permit to a 24-hour, you have to, if you're renting your house out for longer than 24 hours, you'd have to have a rental permit. So you'd be going through the same thing that anybody renting their house for longer than 30 days, or, excuse me, longer for seven days would have to do in Patent Township. That alleviates all the safety questions.
And I believe it's a three-year inspection cycle for code, and then part of the renewal process on the local level is just ensuring that you still had your rental permit from code.
Yeah.
So that's, once every three years, that doesn't seem very difficult.
Yeah, and that also catches things like sewage problems, and, and smoke detectors being out of service, and all the stuff that I get to deal with when I do a landlord-tenant case.
So, Nicole's on Zoom, and she has a question.
Okay, Ben, did we answer your question there?
Kind of, I was, I thought those were getting conflated with the owner occupied part as well.
The owner occupied is going to be more for the other issues that have been running around with Patent Township residents complaining.
Neighborhood, yes, stability, quality.
Yeah.
But we're not all in agreement on that one.
Yeah, so it's more like we all want to know more.
That's right.
Debbie, you have your hand up.
Nicole has something else.
Yeah, and let me, let me get to Nicole, then I'll get back to you, all right, Debbie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Nicole.
Okay, just to give you guys a little bit of background on how the rental permits for more than seven consecutive days, in regards to occupancy, so, right now, Patent Township permits a family plus two unrelated, or in lieu, three unrelated. So, my question to the planning commission meeting, or the board, is, do you wish to stay with that occupancy requirement for short-term rental?
That's a good question. So can you repeat that one more time for us?
Sure. Current rental housing permits, occupancy is set at a family plus two unrelated, or in lieu, three unrelated. Do you wish to keep that occupancy for short-term rentals?
I don't, I, I mean, if you have a six-bedroom house or something, why would it be restricted to two or plus two? I guess I'm confused on that.
Am I not understanding?
No, it's. Yeah, so, the definition in Patent Township for a family, and let me pull it up here, and I apologize, because my computer wouldn't let me zoom in.
And for everybody.
So, our occupancy is set per our definition in the zoning ordinance for a family, and it limits it to a family plus two unrelated, or in lieu, three unrelated. So, to Debbie's point, she has her, the parents from California that have a son that comes here to Penn State, the family when they, you know, obviously, they are the family, so father, mother, son. They can have two additional people live with them that are unrelated, or if they have additional family, they would be classified as family. In lieu of that, you can only have three unrelated.
Yeah, Nicole, I think that's a question for the solicitor, because I, I have a feeling, I don't, I don't know this to be true, but I have a feeling that maybe some of those family definition things might have to change also with the times, but, yeah, I think that could be a little problematic, so we'll have to talk with the solicitor about that.
I'm going to say punt?
Yes.
Just for everybody that didn't know, Nicole Hartner is the Patent Township zoning enforcement officer, so the disembodied name was our zoning enforcement officer, so, anyways.
Oh, Debbie has.
Oh, yes, back to Debbie.
Don't forget about me. So, just on, piggybacking on what Nicole just said, you know, a lot of the HOAs, a lot of the apartment, or the condo associations have that with the unrelated, and then they have an age group on that as well. So you can't rent to an unrelated under the age of 21, or whatever it is. So that's another, another issue that we have to take into consideration. But, my question originally was, so if we do, let's say we do a code inspection, or for a long-term rental, how is that going to be different than a short-term rental? Because, I mean, if we do simple things for a short-term rental, like the fire, you know, fire extinguishers, furnace, air conditioning, and everything works, they have all the necessary things for a rental, would not be any different than a hotel, but if you do long-term rental, and you have a code inspection, you're going to detail of fire escapes and all that kind of stuff. So I think we have to identify that as well.
I would say just rental permit.
So there are no differences between, in code's eyes, there are no differences between a long-term rental permit or a short-term rental permit. They have the same inspections that need to be met. To my knowledge, it does not include fire escapes when you're talking about single-family homes. But, yes, any of the regulations that are required for a long-term rental permit, it's the same requirements, even if it's short-term, everyone has to follow the same regulations, they're all on the three-year cycle, to ensure that they are still meeting those requirements. Again, fire, egress, et cetera, is my understanding. I have not gone in depth with the code enforcement officers to figure out exactly what they request when you need a rental permit, on any property, for that matter, but it would be the same process regardless of time period.
I'm handling the case, so I actually have all that right now. Okay, so, since we don't have to do anything with this discussion, I'm just going to let it fade away, and I'm going to ask, you know, we've got all the comments from the room, I know two, I don't know what you guys are looking to do.
They're Penn State students.
Okay, well, I mean.
They're learning about what a planning commission does, this is a great meeting for them to come to.
We talk a lot, and get nothing done. Okay, so, Debbie, Rich, you guys have anything left on this one?
No.
No, I'm good.
Last call for any comments on this from Zoom.
None.
Going once, going twice.
I just, I do have a question.
Okay, go for it.
I'm more about the owner occupied, though, I'd like to know more about that. You said you're taking that one back?
No, so what we're doing is, is we're all saying on the board is, we would like to know more about that, and we are telling our wonderful staff over here to go put together what owner occupied would look like as far as regulation, and bring that back to us, so that we can come up with an informed decision, and so that you, the public, seeing us do this can go, oh, that sounds like a good idea, or, wow, that sounds bad, don't do that, so.
Yeah, we're at the very beginning of this process, Ben, so we're just kind of fleshing out possible ideas, and then what we'll do for the planning commissions, bring back some draft regulations, and let them review and discuss it, and see how, you know, see what they think of what we came back with. So this is the very first piece of the process.
Okay, so then when would that lead to a decision being made on that? Like, is this already something, it sounds like you're looking to put that in place, but you're just looking at how you're going to do it?
So, there is interest from the Board of Supervisors to put short-term rental regulations in place, yes, but we have to come up with what those regulations are, and that could take the planning commission a couple of months to do that, and then they would send it back to the Board of Supervisors for discussion. The board at that point could say, yes, this is the best thing we've ever read, or no, we really want to send this back, we have some suggestions or questions. So it's not anything that's going to happen tomorrow, it's not anything that's going to be in place probably in January, it probably would be the, you know, latter half of 2025, if I had to guess, like, spring, summer timeframe, rather than, you know, February, March timeframe.
And realistically, I think the fastest that we could actually move on this with any speed would be, what, 90 days? With all the times.
Minimum of 45.
Yeah.
There you go.
We have advertising requirements and other things we have to do.
Yeah, so, then there's bouncing back and forth between solicitor and, and, so.
So just keep your eye on the agendas, and if it comes up, then just, you know, zoom in on the meetings, and, and then you can ask questions and bring up whatever is concerning you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any last comments from the board members on this? Hearing none, I'm not asking staff.
No, we're good.
Other business?
So just the other business is that the supervisors acted on everything that you did. did at your September meeting at their October meeting, so the wholesaler plan, the coop, the rezoning for Douglas, which you just saw tonight, so everything they acted on, everything you acted on, they acted on. And then Debbie is supposed to be giving the board update on November 13th, but Debbie has just had some surgery, so she's not able to make it. So if anyone would like to pinch in and fill in for Debbie in November, that would be great, if not, I can certainly take it as well.
If you send me a script.
Very easy script, yes.
I'm sure I can probably work that into my hectic schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Just tell me what time to actually show up, so I don't have to show up for the entire thing.
Look at the agenda.
Yeah, I'll see what's on that agenda, I don't know what's on that agenda yet.
Sometimes you're here for an hour and a half before it's your turn to say anything.
You can always zoom in, you're always available.
That's true.
Yeah, well, that one, I got delivered stuff on a bad day, too. All right, so, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Second, okay, everybody's, we are officially adjourned.